He just gonna topcoat and patch it, that's all he gonna do. He ain't gonna, he ain't gonna do much work, much labor. Not if you saying the football field was like forty seven yards.
Forty thousand, four thousand and six thousand to drive it.
Uh huh. If this him, he gonna, he gonna lay some gravel in the pothole.
Half of that. He don't wanna do much.
All right, we gonna call the meeting to order. It's a regular session. Uh, three fourteen, two thousand twenty-two. We gonna call for a moment of silent prayer. We'll do the pledge of allegiance. All right, the first thing we need to do is approve the agenda. I think there may be a change from the, what was originally handed out to you. Was there a change, something added? Okay, that's the only change.
I don't approve that. I don't approve that. Let Mr. Wine do it.
All right. Any, anything need to be added or changed other than that? Need a motion to approve it.
Second.
All in favor? Motion's carried. The minutes, you review them, does everything look like it was in order? If it does, we need a motion to approve it.
I make a motion to approve.
Just second.
I wasn't here, but you gonna need a second, a third.
I wasn't here either.
Well, if you reviewed it, I mean, I, I think it's okay. All right. The motion's carried then. Uh, and, and Nikki, if, if there's any complication with that right there, she can review it and we'll revisit it if we need to at the next meeting or whatever. Uh, count's payable. Any questions on that? Need a motion to approve it.
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
All in favor? Motion's carried. Financial report?
Make a motion to approve them.
All in favor? All right, motion's carried. The old business is, uh, nope, appearances. Getting ahead of myself. Robert Clark, the EMS, we got a, had an accident. You wanna tell us about that?
Yes, sir. My name is Robert Clark, I work with Bakersfield County EMS Service. And I have been approached to stage a mock accident, um, out for prom. It's for the week of prom. I did this approximately somewhere between eight and ten years ago. It was the last one I did, uh, and I need the county's permission because I'm gonna be using resources of the county. I'm gonna be using ambulances, I'm gonna need some help with some of the deputies, uh, and everything. Um, I've already got the school board's permission. They're on board with it, I presented with them, and I'll meet with the city council tomorrow night to get their approval. What I'll be doing is literally I'll be staging an accident out in front of the high school on Phillipsburg Road. Uh, and it will be, it will involve, uh, fire, EMS, police sheriff, highway patrol, helicopter, coroner, and, and all of above, and, and a wrecker service as well. Um, what we'll do is we're gonna stage, there will be a death. There will be, uh, one flown out, two taken by ambulance, and one will be administered a sobriety test and arrested on scene by the highway patrolman and carried away for causing drunk driving and, and killing somebody. And that's what it's all about, is not a drink and drive during prom. Because we all were at prom one time in our lives, and we all know how, how it was and how it is, and, and it changed. Prom is on the twenty-first of May. And I was gonna do it Friday the twentieth, but I've been informed that apparently after lunch they let all the girls go home to get their nails and fingernails and hair done. But I can't do it on Thursday because of senior testing, so it will be done that Wednesday. And it's gonna have to be done at one o'clock.
What's that date now?
Is when it will be done, on that Wednesday, which is the seventeen. Uh, at one o'clock. And, um, I will have, the participants will be students, will actually be students at the high school. They, they, the principal and Ms. Jana, the counselor, they are gonna handpick the five people that I need, uh, and everything. Um, I'm gonna have a vehicle in the roadway damaged badly, and I'm gonna have one on its side in the ditch right off the side of the road. And the fire department will keep traffic under control, and we'll close off the section we're using and the fire department will direct traffic around one single lane. I will put this in the newspaper, and I will put this on Facebook as I get closer to it. Because I don't need somebody driving by saying, I saw your child, something, I thought was your child vehicle, next thing you know, we've got a mob. The children will be behind the fence. Uh, it will consist of licensed drivers, it will be the seniors, juniors and the seniors, and some of the same. It may be all the tenth graders, uh, principal and I haven't fully leveled that out quite yet, uh, but I'm pretty sure that's how it's gonna be. And, uh, it, like I said, it will start at one o'clock, and it's gonna be just like it was real. I will have it paged out over the airways, the fire department will respond, the police and sheriff and everybody will respond there. And then when I get the okay, I'll land the helicopter. The helicopter will not fly a student out, they will fly a dummy. We cannot do that. Even though the kid gets mad because he getting flown a helicopter, they want it to, uh, and everything. I don't know who the five students are at this moment, uh, I will take care of all that because I have to get all my permissions first before I can proceed with this. And so far, everybody is on board with it, and I just need permission from the county because like I said, I'm gonna be using two ambulances, I'm gonna be using resources. I am gonna get the county covered on our outland places by the other services. Baker County will look out for that side, early this side, Decatur on the, on the, uh, south side. Uh, they will do the best they can to help us naturally if they're tied up. But that being said, I will ask for volunteers, uh, that I work with, our own personnel, to come in that day to either run the ambulance while we're doing this or to participate in the accident itself. And like I said, we will, we will, uh, the fire department will set up cribging to hold up, stabilize the vehicle. They will cut the girl out that's gonna be alive and flown out. Uh, the boy that's gonna be dead is gonna be laying up in the ditch over the grass already, uh, he'll have his head split wide open. Uh, we will have them, I have a makeup artist that's gonna mulage, as they call it, all over to perform, I have all my injuries. There will be beer cans scattered just to show that there was drinking involved in this. And then the young man driving the car will be arrested, he'll, he'll do a field sobriety test, and he'll be arrested on the spot. And then the other two young men in the vehicle will be taken by ambulance, and they'll be taken up to the high, the old high school or somewhere like that, where the terminet and it just dropped off or let out and everything. Um, so like I said, I have the board of education permission, I have the high school principal on board with the counselor, and because I'm using your resources, I have to have your permission. And I will be sending notes home, letters home with each one of these children to get their parents' permission to do so. I will not do this, and the safety of these kids are my number one priority. Any questions?
Is, uh, is this something that y'all, I mean, they called?
Look at me, Craig, 'cause I'm sorry, I was trying to hear you.
Um, is this something that they've used that code red on the telephone to call? You think you need to, to do that, to tell everybody ahead of time that this is a mock accident? Or is that something you can?
I hadn't thought about that, to be honest with you, but I can do that, I can get, uh, because I'll see, I'll have the city council tomorrow night. I don't know who, is Cory still in charge of the code red? Is that who puts this out? I can do that, I can, I'd be more than glad to do that, to put it out.
Y'all think you need to do that?
Whatever it takes. Because like I said, I don't need a parent, you know.
How real, how real do you want it, I mean?
Sir, I'm gonna make it as real as I can. Except the fact that the vehicles are already gonna be staged, and actually I'm not gonna ram two vehicles together. You know, it, it's gonna be just as real as I can keep it. But I have to, like I said, I have to keep, the, the public's gotta know about this. I'm gonna keep it quiet as long as I can, and it'll be, because like I said, it's being the weekend, week that it is, I will make sure that Terry puts it in a newspaper three weeks running. And I will personally put it on Facebook, and I will ask people to share this on Facebook.
So everybody's gonna know this in the law enforcement.
Oh yeah, I've done talk with you, I've talked with everybody so far, except for the county commissioners and the city council. Uh, the helicopter's on board, GSP is on board, I said all that, I've talked with everybody. Brian Palmer, most people know him, Brian will probably be my highway patrolman that I use, because Brian's done a lot of these, uh, and everything. But, uh, Trent, Trent's got the helicopter involved, um, like I said, I've, the fire department, I've talked with him briefly. And I will come back to you, um, before this, at the next, I'm, hopefully I'll have all my, I got all my ducks in the pond, I gotta get them in the road now. And hopefully next commissioners meeting, I'll be able to come and show you, uh, a picture of, and where everything's gonna be placed and how I'm gonna do it to give you a better idea.
What happens if the weather, the weather don't cooperate? What happens if the weather doesn't work out?
What happens if what?
The weather.
The weather don't work out? I don't know, I mean, I, I'll have to cancel it, that's the only thing I can do, because, um, we have to set this, I have to get, because of senior testing and school testing all that week and everything, I can't do it. And the closer, naturally, I want it to closer to prom, I can't. I mean, it's kinda like, the way I look at it, Alan, is if I send out birthday invitations to my wife's birthday party next month, instead of two weeks before her birthday, half the people are gonna forget about it. And I'm trying to do it, I wanted to do it the day before, like I said, and that's what we did last year. But that's out and then Thursday because of senior testing. I wanted to do it at ten o'clock in the morning and not one, again, because of testing and getting the kids fed, uh, and everything. We're gonna have to do it at one o'clock. The principal has assured me, uh, that we will not be in the way of all of parents and the school buses picking kids up, because I didn't realize that, that we didn't have that many kids rode school buses anymore. Uh, but anyway, uh, but like I said, as of right now, all I'm looking for is permission and best wishes, you know, your blessing to be able to do this. Uh, and I will come back, uh, like I said, the next meeting and update you and let you know where I am at, where I stand. And hopefully then I'll have my picture that I can show you up, you know, on the board or something that, uh, will show you where everybody's gonna be positioned and how it's gonna be. If I'm out any money, it's to buy the kids a lunch at, through the five that I'm gonna have early, because I gotta get them dressed and everything, and I may have to pay the roll back driver's fuel fee or something like that, but other than that, that's it. All I need is the board's permission to do so.
Y'all got any more questions on that?
No, I'm fine with.
Let's make a motion to, to approve him doing this.
I make a motion for him do the mock accident.
I second.
All in favor? Uh, motion's carried. We, we appreciate it and, uh, just update us on the thing that come up.
Thank you so much.
All right, and the next thing is the Miller County GOP, got Keith Bowen to, uh, talk to us.
Some paperwork y'all might can read a little bit more along, I don't know if Lady can read or not, but, uh.
Got these pictures for me.
Well, there's one that's got a picture on here, so I don't know.
Needs be bigger, I can't see good as I used to either.
I got my little cheaters around my neck, that's what I got, yeah. Give somebody mine. There's one that's got KP on the front of it, I was speaking. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't.
Mine says Keith, but why I went right there?
Yeah, but I wrote some on there.
Hey, that is right, I had them on my hip from sleep. All right, thank y'all for, uh, allowing me this time to come out and speak to y'all about a, I believe it's a problem here in, in Miller County, uh, I believe it's a problem everywhere in Georgia. We had a election, like everybody knows, and y'all probably heard enough about it, you sick to death about it. It went on, started in November, went to January. Uh, but the only trouble is, is there's been a lot of, of inconsistencies, and I don't, it doesn't matter to me if you voters are Democrat or Republicans or independent, I just want our votes to count, to be, all our legal votes to be counted accurately and fairly for everyone involved. And that's my goal here, I'm not trying to push one party or the other. Uh, what I'm saying tonight is, there's problems with our voting system, not just in Miller County, but all one hundred fifty-nine counties. I don't know if you're aware, but when the law was passed, it, it allowed us the ability to request valid I don't know if you're aware, but when the law was passed, it, it allowed us the ability to request ballot images from our elections. Uh, there was two ladies in Miller County that worked with voter GA and requested ballot images from several local counties that they're, they're listed down here, Simcoe, Decatur, Lounge, Early, Randolph and Worth. We got them back, most of them within the week. Uh, you notice Miller County's getting on there, they were, uh, we tried to get it from there. And I talked to Chairman Freeman about that a while back and, and I'm not throwing, uh, Judge Josh under the bus at all. He did an admirable job in a horrible situation. He wasn't able to get certified to, uh, oversee the election because of the COVID stuff. He could not get to take the test. So, uh, I believe, uh, Judge McNeese filled in for him to get that done and she did an admirable, admirable job. But what it came down to, we could get copies of some of the ballots that we were supposed to get. But lots of them, we never were able to get. And we finally found out it's something that, that a Dominion, uh, employee did that erased some of the ballots. So we don't have, we have the physical copies still in a safe. But we're not eligible to get the physical ballots, we could just get the ballot images. With that being said, things like this, I don't know if y'all looked at anything at voter GA that went on up there and, uh, some of those counties around, metro counties around Atlanta where a bunch of the votes are missing again. We got lots of the case law in here and this email thread we sent out. But I know in our, in our county, the people that we deal with, very few folks have confidence in the elections. They just want to vote to the county, that, that's, that's it. Uh, and in Georgia law, it says, let me get to where it says it at. Well, there's two things I want, wanna point out. Uh, Georgia law affords us a remedy to vote by paper ballot when use of vote machine is impossible or impractical. So it, it tells us that we do have an out. And also, a judge, Judge Amy Totenberg has already ruled that the Georgia, the way we vote is unconstitutional because it says that a person that votes has to be able to visibly see what his vote is going to be. And I, I gave y'all a copy of a, a ballot here, the, it was a Dorr County sample ballot here. And if y'all was like me, when y'all voted, you get printed this piece of paper, it was a brown piece of paper, and you looked and it said for President of the United States, whoever you voted for, all the other things you voted for are listed. But what you read don't matter a hill, hill of beans, what that machine counts is that right there. Is that barcode? And I, y'all might be better than me, but I can't, I bet can't, neither one of y'all, none of y'all read that barcode. And that's what makes this system illegal in Georgia to vote on. It's unconstitutional because it, it, the, the law plainly states that you have to be able to visibly see what your ballot is when you turn it in. With all these things that are coming about, and there's a list, I'm not gonna take a lot of your time with, but there's a list of fifteen things that, that, uh, voter GA has found out that went on up there and the ballots in around Fulton County that were, uh, discrepancies. I'm not gonna say that they were done intentionally, it could have been by lack of training or, or, or lack of ability. But there were multiple, multiple things done that don't pass the smell test. And here in our, in our county of Miller County, uh, and I'm not saying that there was some nefarious things done, but I am saying that somebody from Dominion messed it up and messed our voting system up. And our voting system is supposed to be done by Miller County people. It's not supposed to be done by Dominion representative. But he did that and erased some stuff and, and my wife was the one trying to get stuff from Miller County. And she has run, chased that rabbit, you have to go to the superior court and talk to the, the district attorney guy. He said you're gonna have to file a lawsuit to get this done, push come to shove. I mean, they could have been a lawsuit filed against Miller County because they didn't provide the stuff that we were able to do. I don't wanna do that. I just want our county to have a, a vote. We have one precinct, we just have two or three thousand people to vote. We should be able to take this upon ourselves and do it to where everybody has full confidence that who they voted for gets counted the correct way. If you're a legal resident and you come to vote, I want it to count for whoever you voted for. And what I'm asking tonight, the law says if it's impractical that, that we don't have confidence in our vote, the law says it though, and I know we're getting an election board, I don't think it's complete yet, but in this under y'all's purview, uh, y'all could say, we gonna vote on paper ballots. And we'll just vote on paper ballots and count them and, and by George, and you vote on a paper ballot, you can look back and see it. When I check a box by this person's name, I look and I see it, that's what that is. And that's exactly what this ain't. There, there's not an app on your phone you can get to read that. It, this is something that is one hundred percent unconstitutional against the Georgia constitution. And our, our county of Miller County can take a stand and say, we gonna stop this right now, we gonna have paper ballots. And we're gonna do it to where all of our citizens, no matter what race, creed, color, sex, what party, whatever you wanna vote, all citizens will have the knowledge that their vote counts the way they cast it. And that, that's what I'm asking before y'all asking tonight.
Alright, let me go back just a little bit to what you, Josh and, and Noel Brendan McNeese are, um, kinda gonna clarify, clarify what, what he said while I go. Cause I talked to the county attorney and talked to Josh and actually was talking, had to talk to a superior court judge about something else, but I ran that by him too. You can petition the court and that's just a protocol thing, so to speak, just like you were saying. The way to go about it, to get access to those paper ballots that are in the vault, in the clerk's office, you can petition the court to get it. So, no, that part right there is still there, it's not gone. That erased part you're talking about, it never was downloaded into Josh's computer like it should have been. The jump drive or whatever you wanna call it, it never was in there, so it's not downloaded into his computer. So when Keith or Jawan went and asked for it, he could not access it.
Through no fault of his own, he, he was completely, Judge Josh, I'm not throwing him under the bus, he did everything possible that he could do. And he, and then he threw his hands up and said, there's nothing else I can do. And it's, you know, in life, there's a bunch of things that are hard, but this shouldn't be that hard. This, this is not supposed to be that hard.
Well, we just felt that it wasn't our mistake. You know, a lot, obviously considering the situation, you know, we just wanted it to be correct. We wanted it, you know, let's get, I asked them, could we just get the ballots put back on there to where we can get the digital, our request answered. But he said it wasn't able to be done or something.
Would it have to be done, what he, if I understood what he said right? You have to get access through petitioning the court, the paper ballots, it's in the clerk's office.
The actual ballots?
Yes, this, this like you're talking about. Alright, you can get that, I think he said, re-scan them. Then it can be downloaded into his system. But a Dominion, uh, worker is gonna have to do that. It's what you'll have to have.
He said, we can scan all those things, but it really gets back and you still can't read that. You still can't read the barcode, you don't know what, you don't know what it says.
Alright, what, what are you asking us to do other than?
I'm, I'm coming before the county commissioners because the way I understand it, we still don't have our election board in place yet, is that correct? Y'all have the ability to say, we gonna vote on paper ballots in Miller County. We've got, how many folks voted last time? Was it three thousand, five thousand people, something like, we got one precinct, it's, it's gonna be extortive, but it's not rocket science. We ain't got seven, eight precincts or twenty, thirty precincts where everybody comes to Miller County and votes. The absentee ballots are already on paper ballots. So that everybody that votes absentee, the, the older folks like to come in and, and vote early, uh, they are, they're already on paper ballots. So we're not looking at the whole, all of them having to be counted by hand. We're just looking at the board counted by Scantron or whatever, we're just looking at the ones that come in, they have.
So you're asking us to, of course, it's gonna be too late to diselection, I think. I don't know whether you do it or not, but you're asking us to, to?
Not use Dominion machines?
Not use the Dominion machines and physically like with this pencil, checked by somebody's name?
You fill in, uh, there's, lots, there's some, some places use the Scantron recolor in a bubble. Like when you take testers in high school and coloring a bubble and run it through, but even if it's that and use a Scantron, you can still look and say, I colored in that bubble by that person's name. And, and that's what it boils down to, that, the, I get the impression from the people I talk to, there's a big distrust and I'm not saying it's correct, I'm not saying it's hooked to the internet, I'm not saying they flip votes. What I'm, only thing I'm saying is the way we vote now does not meet Georgia standards that they set for us to be able to read the ballot that we cast.
Well, I don't trust, I don't trust anybody that's trying to see in the first place.
That, see, that's what I mean, I, I want our constituents, our, our fellow voters in our county to have confidence in what they're voting for is counted the way they want to, no matter what part of the vote.
How are they gonna handle the part, you know, is, a lot of people, you know, it's confidential what you vote, you don't, you know, are they gonna have somebody there for the elderly people or the people that, you know, having a hard time?
See, with the absentee ballots, it's already that way, they can, they can.
Well, the ones that's coming that day, the ones that's coming that day.
On that day, we've already got poll, poll workers. And, and there will be nobody's name on the ballot. They will just come in and with their ID and, and get scanned and say, I'm here to vote. And it shows that you're here to vote and then you'll take the ballot and you'll color in your stuff and you'll turn it in. There will be no way to make.
We need to make sure that it stays, that we in accordance with some kind of state guideline.
We're gonna talk to the county attorney about it, to, to verify all this stuff and, I mean, we, we gonna?
Because you don't supposed to have someone there, they, you know, that, that, they say that coerce you to vote. You, you know, that coerce you to, to vote another way, so, um, that would be my issue with that, you know. Uh, like he said, we talk to the attorney and, and see what he says, but I'm like him, I, I don't have no confidence in the, those machines myself.
That's right, I want, I want all of our people to, when they go and vote, I don't care who's for, to know it counts correctly. And, and that's all what I'm asking for and it, and the way I read the law, it says that y'all have the ability to make that change. Uh, and I, I thank y'all for listening to me because it's, you know, when, when you, when you look at it and you read all these things that they got up, all the things that went wrong in, in Fulton County. Uh, and I, what, what was it, five counties or seven counties didn't get turned in, that were voted records of Georgia?
Five.
Five, out of a hundred fifty-nine counties, only five that didn't turn in a voter record.
No, I think it was more than that, it was, well, it wound up being more than that.
Well, anyway, Miller County was one of them.
That's the pack, the counties. And that means that, um, I mean, even if they were missing one small part, they deemed them that they didn't turn in everything. But I know that our old system before, it used to pull the lever, you know?
Yeah, the, the big old giant machine.
Yeah, shoot, they're called a shoot machine, shoot machine, yeah.
That, that actually, you know, puncture you, you know, you didn't fill it in with a hint, but she went into a vote, voting booth and you pulled that lever mine once. And that, I mean, we remember the hang of Chad, you know, in two thousand, but, um, thinking of like, it used to be done that way. It used to be done on, on ballots.
And the sad thing is a bunch of folks that I've heard talk, they say, well, I ain't gonna vote because I don't think my vote counts the way I want it to. And we don't need that as a country that's founded as a, as a representative republic. We need for our people to have confidence that when they go to vote, they get to vote one time. Their one vote counts exactly as they cast it and have confidence. And I, and I can, I'm only to remember when our military went into Iraq and those folks had their first election, they went through and they voted every, how they did and they poked their thumb in that equal and they, there was rain just as big as they could, because they got the right to vote. They know they, they voted, they booked it, they didn't have a Dominion machine, but by Georgia, they vote counted. And, and that's what I want our people in our county to be an example of what other counties can do. When we get serious about, you know, I think I made a mistake, I go and say, a, a right to vote is a privilege to vote.
Well, with, with those computers, yeah, just cause you go out there and it shows, it shows you what you voted for. That don't necessarily mean that one of them's gonna show.
Yes, and that's what that barcode, you can, you can read all this stuff that, well, that person, this, this thing, this example voted for. You can read all this stuff and say, well, yeah, that's exactly the way I voted. But it don't matter, what matters is that barcode and that's what makes it unconstitutional.
You know, I don't know how much I'd like to probably put in a request to know how much the county has to pay for these machines, the Dominion machines, but I'm pretty sure that it's pretty hefty across the state, we know how much it costs. But, um, it, it makes me and it makes voters, I can only speak for myself, uneasy to know that people that are doing the processes, the machines are not people that are my constituency of Miller County, that we have deemed to run our elections. That it's people from the outside that control the software, that control everything. That concerns me as a voter. And we have a situation now where something wasn't put on there. I don't feel like, I, me as a citizen should have to file a suit to try to get unsealed the documents because it wasn't my mistake. It seems to me like, you know, someone in a higher authority position, even the judge should, you know, put in something. Cause I contacted our district attorney and said, what do I need to do to try to get these ballots put back on the machine? And I was basically just shut down in every, every avenue that I went through to try to get this information um, that was available to me by all. And so it was just never fulfilled. But me as a voter, knowing that they had their hand in our election and that a jump drive and things were done incorrectly, it doesn't give a voter confidence to know that when you go and vote that, and what happened in Fulton County, I take a, and other counties, I take a direct interest in that because what happens there dilutes my vote here over the whole state. So that's why, uh, we mentioned the Fulton County, the other Dominion problems that had, so.
I think, I think part of the issue, like you pointed out, um, is voter apathy. If people think their votes don't count, they don't show them.
Why, why are we with it?
Why?
The supervisors, everyone out here, I'm in voter GA too, they have no trust and they feel like, they felt uncomfortable because the ITs had control of it, they have no control, even our Josh and, and he says, he don't know what happened after it left here. He knows our numbers after it left here. He's not confident what happened, he said next year, he may be making a mistake and he'll be going to jail. And he says, I mean, and he's not only supervisor, I had five supervisors telling that, they were not comfortable with these machines.
We can, what I'm asking is, we can, we're not a highly populated county, sometimes it's good, sometimes it's bad. But we can, we can take a stand and say, we're gonna do paper ballots. It's the way, the way the law reads is we have the ability because of the impracticality and, and it's something that our focus on how confidence in. It seems to me like we need to make a stand to say, we're gonna do that. And I, I see people here that's probably from, I don't know what anybody, how they vote, is Republican or Democrat, I don't care. But I see, everybody, everybody here is agreeing that we need to rebuild the confidence in our vote. And that's something that every party should be able to get behind there, no matter what you identify as a Republican, Democrat, conservative, liberal, I don't care. I just want our votes to count correctly, the way you voted it. And to be able to look back and say, this vote here, when I see what I wrote, it ain't no barcode like you. I'm sure all of y'all went to Sam's and, and, or Walmart, you scanned something, it comes up for a pipe range, it's a baseball bat. And you say, well, what the heck went on there? Is that barcode? And what was to say this is not here and we would never know it if it don't count correctly. That's what's going on.
If, uh, y'all want to, to see what we can, what we're allowed to do.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And if you give us, sometime the county attorney, he, he's got stuff ahead of us that he's got to finish or whatever. Give us a few days, I think, I don't think we'd be able to do nothing during this. It's too far down the road in this election, but there might be something could be done before November. And let us get back to you in, in the next few days if, if we can, if that's alright with y'all.
Yes, now I'll look and get some more information, I'll at least meet back with y'all next month until next meet to find out get up some more ways that we might could accomplish this in an easy fashion. Thank y'all so much for your time.
I'm gonna tell you this too, being that it is what it is, before we did anything, I, I think you probably have to go through a process of having a public here and to get the whole county's input on the thing, whether they were agreeable to it or whatever, I mean, let's see what we can do.
Yeah, I want to be correct, whatever we want, if we can, I want to be incorrect. Where there will be no, oh, well, y'all didn't cross the i's and you got the t's or got the t's and crossed the i's or whatever you wanna do. We didn't do it right and we, I want us to be sure that we look at this thing and it sounds like we must have produced a consensus and rebuild the trust in our, our voting privilege that we have.
Well, you got to start somewhere.
That's right. But it's time for us to show, show the rest of the state what do rights, what do wrong, you know? Show what we can do right. Thank y'all so much.
Alright, appreciate it. Alright, did y'all have any more question about any of this? Alright, next thing is the old business, Sheriff's Department lawsuit, that's on page thirteen. All right, next thing is the old business, Sheriff's Department lawsuit. That's on page thirteen. See, other than the information, what?
There, there's not. First, let me tell you, um, Commissioner Dixon called me and said she was not gonna be able to make it. Her parents was in a, a minor wreck. So she was just checking off, she had to go check some out, so I wanted to throw that out there. Um, no, there's no, no other information on the, on the lawsuit. It's, it's still the same ones. I did contact the lawyer and gave him to go ahead to, uh, to put that Rollins, uh, Rollins as the county's in contact. So that's the take.
All right. The security camera system at the landfill. Y'all, I think y'all got some pictures in here. It shows what it's capable of doing. Is there any question on that? Are y'all satisfied with that? I think you, I mean, this ain't no guarantee that something was going out there, illegal dumping or whatever, somebody made a mess out here, that you could identify who it is. But you gotta, if they own a vehicle, or, I mean, you got a pretty good picture, and I think this thing shows at night. Infrared also don't.
We're gonna add a couple more cameras around once, once, um, Andy's gonna be putting a fence across the front. Once that's taken care of, it, it'll clear some of that, uh, debris out of the way, and give us access to put up the cameras.
I think that was out there a couple weeks ago, and a lot of stuff is still being thrown in them dumpsters, like scrap iron stuff. They got dumpsters set up for scrap iron. The stuff is still being thrown in the household garbage stuff. It's not being looked at as closely as it should. Now, Shelly right there, is when you pull in there, you got scrap iron, you've got furniture dumpster, you've got household garbage stuff, but they still not paying attention to it.
We looking into that a little bit. Um, there may have to be a little bit changes made, how he do, he, he needs to walk out there with the people. I mean, that, I don't think he getting off the porch half the time.
Not trying to call an issue for him, don't get me wrong. I'm just saying, if I seen what was going on, you know, it's just not being handled properly.
And also to tell y'all, we are putting signs that's gonna be labeled for individual dumpsters. I guess Shelley, Shelley's, Shelley's got them on orders, so once they come in, they're gonna be magnetized. So we'll be able, whenever they pick up that dumpster, they'll be able to take it off and put on one that they, they leave her.
They're, they're actually on them. We got those one.
Okay, fine.
I mean, even, if I might suggest, even as you go in, if you had a sign directing, you know, arrow pointing metal, that kind of thing.
They did get ended, stand out.
Yeah.
In between the dumpsters.
Cause several times that I've been out there, he actually, when, when I went out there, he was helping, um, this gentleman. And then he came and helped my brother lift up, um, a heavy item to put in there. So he was actually helping when I went out there.
There were none of them been out there, he's been out.
Out there.
You got people that go out there, well, I'm gonna throw it in anyway. I ain't, I ain't gonna throw it on him.
Dump is closed today, and you'd be amazed that folks come to the dump today, 'cause we took the fence now.
Oh, yeah.
We've been cleaning that up, and once we get a new fence up, some of this, and I think Doug seen it a lot too, on, on the cameras, that we, we have a lot of activity. In fact, one guy come, had his trailer loaded, and he came to the dump. And he didn't have about ten tires on, on the trailer, but he came today. And he had it loaded, like, I'm going to the dump. And they found a way to get in, you know, and he didn't dump tires, 'cause we was there, but they come in and dumped a bunch of scrap metal. Some of this may stop, 'cause we get this fence up, there should be no access until it's open.
Until they hook to it, tear it down. Until they hook to it, tear it.
We have a camera on that, sure we're checking.
I, I've watched the cameras at like nine o'clock at night, there's people out there with little headlamps on dumping trucks. It's that man.
But we, we started on the fence today, we, we got the debris out the way, and we're, we're working on getting the fence.
We have a lot of work yet, it's, it's.
There ain't gonna be a drive in there, no kind of which way, which you get it.
Not unless they tear something down. There, there will be a standing fence all the way around the dumpsters when we get the front fence put back up. Now, it's, it's open right now, 'cause I cleaned up all the trees on it today. You know, we're gonna do the best we can to get it sealed off fast as we can. But it's just amazing, if you go out there like today and sit there and just watch the people that come to the dump, knowing that the dump is closed. And, I mean, they're loaded to come to the dump. But anyway, we working on the fence and.
When you get the fence up, is there, is there gonna be a sign up there that's gonna tell them, like, what the fine is, if they?
There, there's already a sign up there, yeah. Yep. And I think Doug put it on Facebook. But there's a big sign right there. Now, um, we had scrap metal magnets on the scrap metal bins. One, one thing we did change is we put, since the city took it, we took two roll-offs, and we put them out there for furniture. 'Cause that's what was hurting us on our, our household garbage. That seemed to work a lot better when they bring furniture, they put it in those two big dumpsters, and the mattresses and things don't wind up. So it, it looks to me that it's working a lot better by having things out there. We don't have a furniture sign yet, but the, the elderly signs are on the small dumpsters. We usually have a scrap metal sign on the scrap metal bins. Um, I mean, it's kinda self-explanatory when you go out there. Um, and we'll do whatever we need to, to direct people, but a lot of the stuff that comes and goes is, is happening when the dump is actually closed.
You, 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 I think you can throw it in there. I don't think nobody's gonna get you for. No, no, I'm talking about if you just throw it in the short one. I don't, I don't think nobody will. That ain't what we talking about. We talking about the tires and the scrap metal and all that. Yeah.
If you don't regulate the short dumpsters, everybody will go to them, there'll be refrigerators and stuff, 'cause they're easier to throw stuff in, so.
See what I'm saying?
Trying to just monitor that to.
We don't want refrigerators and tires and stuff like that in the short. Yeah. You ain't doing that, are you?
No, I can't do that.
Better wash her a little closer, probably.
All right, um, while we talking about that right there, the city wanted to use, which is further down on the new bi- the new, new business, wanna use some of that property out at the landfill to put the, store the dumpsters in that they want to use them. Uh, can't you put it on the landfill part, where the actual trash was, but there's some other property out there. Did, did the man you talked to, he say anything about using that? Just don't put it on the landfill part?
Except Tom Fowles, he just said we could put it on anything that was landfill. He didn't say anything about the, the property that's to the, back towards ninety-one.
Sure.
So that's never been used, to my knowledge, as landfill.
Yeah, the ninety-one side, when you go in the road, the ninety-one side in the back right there is kinda just ours. We have seven acres in the back that's an inert landfill. You can't put anything on it. And you can't put anything on the old landfill, but there is.
Be the big red ones or just the green ones?
Is that what it, he was gonna put the bigger ones there, or some of all of them, wasn't he?
Some of all of them.
They, they just need a storage facility.
Just, just for overflow, where if somebody wants one, they can run out there and get it or something.
I think where they were, over here where the old bus shop was, they was gonna do something with that property, and they just wanted to find another spot. And do y'all wanna go ahead?
Any of these people can't get to it, fill them up with trash, can they?
No, um, when we get through, everything will be gated off, we, I think the gate can go back.
They were gonna fence it.
Yeah.
All right, do, uh, we need to make a motion to do that, or is that, was there gonna be a, a written agreement on that?
That'd be up y'all. I mean, you wanna.
I'd rather see something than writing it.
Let's, let's get a written agreement drawn up that they can, if, they gonna put, and I think that's kind of what was talked about before. They gonna put a fence down there to seal it off, so they can't use the dumpsters. And, uh, to let, just, if they put the fence up, allow them to use it. Is that agreeable? I need a motion, let's do that.
I'll make it.
Is there a second on that?
I have a second.
All right, all in favor? All right, motion's cured. Uh, any more question on anything about the dump? The next thing is the, uh, the ordinance for the road.
So that didn't have the road?
This is still ongoing kinda. They, uh.
I got you guys a draft in there to look at. Um, it pretty much covers a lot of everything that you wanted. If there's anything that you want to add or delete, just.
To read over the thing.
Did you get it from somewhere or did you come up with?
Can't tell you that. It's, uh, it's actually the one that's in, in circulation now.
I think you come, they, some of this stuff came from several different parts. It ain't, it didn't come off of one thing. But anyway, that, we ain't got to vote on it tonight. Read over the thing, if you're comfortable with it, we can put it in place. There may be something needs fine tuning in there, or, or something that was added to it. But anyway, you, you got it. Just study up on the thing. The GPS units for the county vehicles. Is there, where we at with that about that?
Okay, so me and Austin had the webinar with that, uh, Samsar, that's the one that the city's using. They do have, I think, three units in circulation. Uh, they don't have any problems with them. Uh, they, they gave me a quote, and in fact, the, the handouts that I gave you, uh, today was what I got from Samsar today. Their quote, like, I think it's nineteen dollars a unit for, uh, three years. And that's including all the free equipment and the monitoring service. Uh, when I was talking with AT&T the other day, they, the FirstNet side of it, they've got, uh, two different, um, companies that they use, which is Geotab and Fleet Complete. And they, they quoted, they haven't gave me a rig quote, but they tell me they can give you down about eighteen dollars, uh, a unit.
What kinda contract do they want?
Um, it's just basically, there's no contract with FirstNet. You just pay as you go. And, and they also do have, and I was gonna talk to Andy about this, they have, uh, the Samsar does, I don't know about the, the AT&T, but they have like the little, uh, it's called equipment GPS, where you just put it on like, say, a trailer. The trailer gets stolen, you, you can track it that way. Uh, I guess they call it an asset, uh, GPS. And those are, those are a lot cheaper per month.
They also have the tie-ins for Ford and Cat.
Yeah, yeah. They've already got contracts with Ford, Cat, well, not Cat, before John Deere.
John Deere.
And so they may already work, and we not have to get any equipment.
Okay.
So I just wanted to kinda give you the, that, that, uh, handout that they sent me.
Is eighteen dollars per unit, per vehicle? How, how, how much is a, is a monthly?
That's it, eighteen a month, per, per vehicle.
Or vehicle.
Per, that's unit charge and all.
My, we, the equipment's free, but it's actually the, the data that you use. It'll come with the monitoring. And there's a lot of stuff that you could do on there, there, that monitoring, that, um, and, and I just figured if we went with it, you know, I know the sheriff had been concerned about, you know, people getting out there, maybe in the public, to be able to see where vehicles are. But, but I think what we would do is put it in the nine-one office and just let them have the access. Nobody else would have access to it with nine-one-one. Um, so that, that's something that, and he, he showed us on a big screen. You can put it on there, it shows where the units are, well, where, where they going, uh, if they've been sitting still, if they're having stoplighting. I mean, it's pretty neat that you can do all that.
Don't think about it till next month and.
When you, I mean, we've been thinking about it for several months. Is this, is this a final?
That's the final quote, brother. And I, and it, basically, I asked him, I said, you know, I really don't know exactly how many vehicles, 'cause Andy was talking about tractors and motorbikes, and I, it's eighteen dollars a unit, no matter how many, whatever you get.
You need a Tri-Lights, like, one department first, or something like that.
Trial if you wanna do that. Those are trial units, that we can try them out for a while.
It'd probably be best to wait to put them on to a new budget here, 'cause nobody's got that new budget. You know, a line for that.
You're talking about three months away. By the time, how long, how long, who's gonna put these things on?
Uh, it just plugs into the OB, what is it, OBS?
OBD.
The computer's gonna wanna check your computer, it just plugs into that where you get power.
Now, with the Ford tying in all that, it just works like John Deere, it works straight off the JV link, right?
Yeah.
My understanding, Ford is perfect, straight off the Ford proprietary.
If you want us to, I, I can request a couple of trials. I already talked to the EMS director about putting them on some of the ambulances as a trial. If you wanna do that, we can try it that way, and let nine-one-one track it.
Wouldn't you do that with, wouldn't you put two, a couple of them on the, the ambulance? And I'd put one on a vehicle in each department.
I don't know how many they'll, they'll give. I know the city's got three, so I'll, I'll see. Maybe we can get on again, just three. And then, and we'll just, we'll figure out what to do.
Uh, y'all wanna do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Go ahead, we need a motion to go ahead and, uh.
I make a motion to get the GPS unit, try them out.
Sure.
All in favor? All right, motion's cured. The, uh, USDA grant for the road department.
Oh, that's another thing. If you look in your packet, uh, they sent that quote over real late today. Uh, they did finally quote a tractor and a law, uh, a mower. Uh, we're still a little short of the hundred thousand that we need to get, to be able to get to fifty thousand. I don't know if that's gonna hurt us or not. So it come out to be ninety-five eight, ninety-five thousand eight hundred.
You need to check that out.
I do have two emails I'll call in to let you see what, what she recommends doing there.
They give up to a hundred. We need to read the literature on that again.
And Andy, that's a, uh, a sixty-one oh five E.
Greg, I was talking to them down there, that, you know, we got those trade-in tractors, we don't want this on this right here by no means, 'cause it's gonna mess it up. But there's a chance, a real good chance, and them, who they sell these used tractor to, will come up here and purchase these tractors after this grant deal is done. So then you gonna knock about thirty thousand dollars off of the fifty thousand dollars, which we gonna be responsible for. So you are roughly twenty thousand dollars in tractor.
Need to.
This needs separating out. It, it, just sell the tractors like you're talking about.
Yeah, no premium.
I think we done tried to bid them things out one time before. I, I, I think you need to, you need to get a couple of these dealers that do like, if they interested in it. I mean, things was about sold here a couple of years ago, and they've just been sitting down there since. And.
Yeah, they would, they would.
I, I'd, I'd open it up to the dick, to, to tractor dealers, not to the public, 'cause they gonna wanna come down here and pay a thousand dollars for the tractor. And, and that ain't, I think that's part of why, when it was bid out before, that didn't ever go over. I, I'd open it up to the dealers. I, I, I'd, and let's get rid of the things. Y'all wanna do that?
Yeah.
Just do the grant separate.
Right.
If we can get that.
Keep the tractors, keep the trade-in tractors out here, no more.
Yeah.
Soon as I hear from her, I'll let you guys know.
But you need, this needs to be a fresh bid from, you got one here from one dealer, and you need a fresh bid from a couple of other ones. And so, and the, and the tractors is out of the deal, completely.
So reach out and get.
Yeah. All right. The next thing is the, uh, Health Department Department. Got a fella named Glenn Ford. Floyd. Uh, Glenn Floyd. And he was a nurse, if I read it right.
He's, he's, he's part-time with Miller County. He's fixed to retire. And, uh, he used to be our community president of Edison.
Right.
Or in on the apps. And, uh, he's sitting in Willy'sburg.
All right, I make a motion to nominate him.
We got a motion to, to appoint him as the Health Department representative for the, for the board, or the county. Say a second on that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion's cured. All right, the next thing, we don't want over, on the new business, we don't want over about the city using the property. The next thing is to see your bids on Bellevue Road construction.
Need a pocket knife, get in this time.
I had to get it out of it. All right, we got two bids here. We got one from Peavy, and that's placed down our edge of Florida towards Avanna. And, uh, got one from Peavy and got one from Oxford. And, uh, they look like, um, trying to look here and see if they bidding on exactly the same thing. Got the mileage right and I got. And I reckon one of them, one of them says something about the strapping, but I ain't seeing it on the other one. The amount of asphalt now looks the same. Was it agreeable, or do you know if, if Oxford's gonna paint the line on the road?
Uh, I know when he talked to me, he was waiting on a, a bid from Pete, you know, to, to give the quote. I know it was in the, in the first that we did, the budget quote.
Alright. The, uh, the bid from Oxford is six hundred thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, and the bid from Peavy is seven hundred and thirty-six, eight hundred and fifty. You got about a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar difference in the price.
Repeat him again.
Seven hundred and thirty-six, eight fifty is from Peavy. Six hundred thousand eight hundred and forty dollars is from Oxford.
I forget from where, Oxford.
The only thing you don't see is the strapping.
It looked like just the amount of, like, asphalt leveling and all that right there is, all that looked like is the same. The amount.
Yeah, it cost a thousand dollars strip it.
And the mileage.
He, he'll strip it cause of them.
Yeah.
But they'll be out there while they're paving, strapping it. I mean,
I don't know if that's included in that six hundred thousand, but in that price.
Uh.
It, it was in the budget. You know, we did a budget, just checking, checking prices.
They always have strapping.
Yeah, they've always.
They put a temporary strike down to start off with, and then they come back.
See if it's any different than he done before. And they were, they were, I, I, when we talked to them.
Probably would hurt to call him, just, you know.
I, I'll check. But when we talked to him about, you know, a budget quote, just see how, you know, how much we was looking at. We added pizza and that dip in the road too. You know, it's got a bad dip in the road, and that was cutting out fifty foot and, of both lanes and pizza and the dip.
Alright, the, uh, was this gonna be, and I was trying to read down here, this gonna be, uh, on some of them spots, we're gonna go over it twice.
My understanding, Craig, and, and, you know, the budget quote was, we gonna do two point six miles. Um, start, start where we left off, which would go almost to the cotton gin, and that'll be pulled twice as a level job. And then pave it. And then from the, basically, it's not quite to the gin, but basically from the cotton gin to Johnny Freeman will just be paved with two inches of asphalt. But that end of the road's in, in really good shape. I mean, it, it's not like the other.
Yeah.
It's, it's, uh, but hold, just hold on a minute. Got the option right here. Doing that right there is an additional eight, eighty-three thousand five hundred and sixty dollars.
Well, he might, he might have broke it out, Craig. You know, he might have broke it out. And beat it to paving, you know, where you can just pave.
Ticking it up and all that's an additional eighty thousand?
Oh, that was in such bad shape, it had to be gone over twice. And that's, that's an additional eighty-three thousand five hundred and sixty dollars for the Oxford one.
But she'll still be cheaper?
He's gonna be.
Not, it's closer though.
Fifty six, about fifty-six, fifty something thousand dollars cheaper.
Well, is Peavy gonna do the double quote?
I'm, I'm trying to read all this right here, cause I, I had access to it, but right now.
Kalen probably just gave the option, you know, if you didn't wanna, you know, just sit down, if you wanted to just pave it. Or if you wanted to, you know, do the extra leveling, that's the way he did the last time. You know, it was, it was separate than the, the actual bid.
Well, they done a good job on that, that first part.
I think they did a real good job on the first half of Bellevue that they done. My concern was just letting whoever paves it fix that dip, because then if it comes back. I didn't go fix it, and then they gonna say, well, your work didn't hold up, and, or I'm saying their work didn't hold up, so.
Yeah, I would probably lean towards letting Oxford. They've, they familiar with the road. They've done it. I mean, if they, if they fit it down on cheaper.
It don't say nothing about, that I see right here. About them going over any of it twice. I mean, it don't. I, I can't see it in there. And it ain't got, it ain't got anything like this road at the bottom. This one wasn't my option. So y'all wanna stick with the Oxford?
Yes.
Alright. Oh, we need a motion to go with the Oxford.
Can I move it?
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, the motion's carried. Uh, we'll get this going on. Did, uh, me trying to read this right quick. Was there any timeline he said about doing this?
Uh, I, our stuff usually reads that, um, work will be completed in sixty days. Now, I didn't really see the ad that we run. But it's usually on, we usually run the same ad and just tweak it, but I didn't.
Have you talked to him lately? I mean, like, is he on schedule lately?
When I talked to him about the budget quote, he was kinda hunting work, cause everybody's worried about fuel and the price and everything that they just hadn't really jumped on a lot of paving, but now
Yeah.
that's, you know, a lot can come in in a few days, you know what I'm saying? But he was kinda hunting something when he was, gave us a, a, a budget quote. He was
Yeah.
probably gonna do it pretty quick.
Alright.
You gonna look over it tonight? Closer?
I don't see no problem with doing it. I just, I don't, it don't say enough starting time if you sign the contract. All it's saying back here is you, this is good for thirty days and it needs to be returned within thirty days.
Now, the bottom of the ad that we run, it does say this is a lump sum bid project that must be, the work must be completed within sixty days.
That, that's what we usually pull it, they usually.
That can do that.
You know, unless something just unreasonable comes along. I've never had it. They've always been close to that sixty days, you know? I mean, anything that happened, breaks down, it's happened, but they usually good about staying in contact with us and hey, you know, we've had a, a problem, we're running a, a few days behind what we're coming. But they were usually pretty close, pretty close in there on that sixty days.
Alright, we'll go, we'll go with that. The, uh, next thing is the tennis court resurfacing. That's page twenty-four and twenty-eight. There's some pictures in there. Of showing kinda what, uh, what they talking about doing. And there's a, it ain't no final bid, but it's a roundabout, pretty close figure. I mean, the man, he ain't come down here and walked over and stood on the court out there. But he's had pictures, Doug's sending pictures up there of the thing. And he's measured some of the cracks that they're supposed to fix. And, uh, he's got a description in him of how they, how they wanna do it. There's a cheap way to do it, and then there's a, a better way, and there's two different warranties on it. Also, the school said that they were willing to pay the part of this. If, if, they're, they're not gonna do it if this thing happens in like July or whatever, but now they would, they would be willing to do it. But after that right there, they gonna do their own thing out there, start planning on doing something out there at the school on their property about some tennis courts. So y'all looked over that. It's twenty-four thousand one hundred dollars. It says the old way, and that's the, that's, and there's thirty-one. Is to do it, and there's like a five-year guarantee with that one.
Well, they gonna pay fifty percent of it, or did they say?
And that's what was talked about.
I, I talked to several of the board members, um, Mr. Leroy, you know, he said that he didn't know what, they haven't voted yet. Um, Shane hadn't brought it to them. But I kinda just talked to a few of them, and they were basically wanting to know, uh, why, why it wouldn't be a three-way with the city, and I, I just told him, basically, the city told me they weren't gonna put anything into it. So, um, that's where we are now. They didn't commit to half. They're just wanting to know why the city's not gonna put any in. So I've talked to Corey several times, and, uh, I'll kinda keep talking to him.
Alright, Doug's gonna contact the man and get him to come down here, and he's up in Lucas Grove. That's about three hours coming down here. Y'all wanna give him the authority to go ahead and negotiate this thing out?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just wanna fix it, I mean.
And, I mean, this ain't this, this, and let's go with the one with the longer warranty, cause he, he's, what he's gonna do with that right there, he's more or less guaranteeing it not to.
Fix it the right way, would you say?
Well, I'll tell you what he told me, cause I called him today, and I wanted to know the difference between the old-fashioned versus the, the right way, which is that's that company stuff. And he, he says that the old-fashioned is just, it's almost like a grout. He, he'll take latex, concrete, and sand mixing together and put it in the hole and then paint it in the cracks. He said, but now, come around December or January, so I'm not gonna lie to you, you'll walk out there and you'll say, where did my twenty thousand go? He said, cause that's gonna crack again. He said, but the cracks that's running along ways or across it is actually stress cracks, and that's, they're put in there for a reason. And if you look at that, that before and after picture, you can see that that's the stress crack in there. But he did say that this stuff here, um, is like that, that, like a fiber mesh that he puts down there and then.
It's like, almost like duct tape with fiber in it or something like that.
Lasts, um,
Yeah.
he'll guarantee that for at least five years. Think the city's been doing it for forty years now?
Well, I think it's been fixed right.
Alright. Need a motion to give Doug the authority to go on and finalize and negotiate this deal out.
Alright.
Say a second on that.
Say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion's carried. The, uh, the next thing is the, uh, the nine one one equipment, equipment upgrade. Whitney come over here, and what she's telling us is there's not gonna be, for these screens that they look at over there in nine one one center, the support for that is fixing to go away in the next little while. I, I think she told us the date, but I can't remember what the date was. But it ain't too far away. There's these units, these screens that they set in front of, that's and the, all this stuff's pretty pricey, but it's something. It's like we had, uh, that other stuff that we upgraded. Over there was obsolete. And there weren't, there ain't even no parts. The only parts that was out there, you had to buy them off eBay, and it was used stuff. But you got some prices here, and there's two or three different ways to do it. And you finance this thing with your bank a lot cheaper than what I think you'd do it with Motorola. But on page forty-three. For some of the, page forty-two and forty-three, that's where some of the pricing stuff starts. You pay for it straight out. Or you pay for it over time. Their percentage rate that they getting, if you pay for it within one year, it's four point eight nine percent. If paid for, if it's two years, it's four point six one. And three-year option was three point nine nine. I think it even goes on, keeps on going to four, to five a year, and that's three point seven six. There's some of this stuff we done over here in that fueling station and all, the bank let us have the money at two points off another.
How long will we do this stuff is obsolete?
This is the, the latest. Me and her and Scott went over there a couple of years ago and actually looked at some of this stuff over yonder in Mitchell County. But the thing that we updated wasn't this. It was a, what do they call that thing, Doug?
Kansas.
Yeah.
It's all worth it.
But I mean, it's like anything else. I mean.
Now, are we leasing this or buying it?
You, you'll be purchasing it.
What you talking about?
Let me see where it says lease term, lease term, like October, two, three.
I mean, we buying it. I, I don't know why that's wrote like that. I don't think you. From what I've read in here, I don't think this thing is letting, I wanted her here. But she's got some sick youngins that she couldn't be here. I don't think this is one of them kinda things that when it gets old, that they gonna come in here and upgrade the thing. I think it's gonna be just like what they got there. It's gonna be obsolete and you're not gonna pay like a service agreement and then keep the equipment up. But the basic price of this thing is a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, or a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. And then there's, this is another thing that wasn't quite clear, but my understanding, me looking back here at the last page. It's gonna cost twenty something thousand dollars to install it.
What, do we need to hold off on this till next month? Table, we get her here, will she tell us a little bit more about?
Yeah, it's something that's an emergency, but it's something that we gonna have to do in the near future. But on this page fifty-nine, you got you got twenty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. That's three operating stations, and that includes parts and labor for them to install the thing. If this is what this actually is. And then from under that figure down is optional stuff. And there's one of the things she told us about was this neck clock thing. Which, it syncs all this different equipment together. That's what it does. So there's not gonna be no lag time. And you look at this, and look at that, and there's a minute difference in it or whatever. But that's, all that's optional. I don't know how important that is. It's fourteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, and if we ain't got to have it, I don't think you need to let that go.
Can we get her in here to maybe tell us about?
She, she needs, she needs to come tell us about it.
Cause I don't know nothing about that kinda stuff.
But it's something we gonna have to do. And anyway, y'all got the information there. You study over it. You might see something in there that I didn't see. But, uh, she kinda run over and through it briefly with me and Doug the other day. I think Faye was here too.
I've, I've already reached out to Baker County to inform them they're gonna have to pay their share of it too, so. I'll give them a month to decide.
But anyway, y'all got, y'all got the gist of the thing. But the thing, what, what we gonna need to do, we're gonna have to do it, but we need to reach out to the bank and see what they'll do on this thing right here. And get back, and we'll have all that information for the next time when we finalize this. Uh, any more questions on this? Uh, the, uh, the next thing we got is the fuel report. That's page sixty, sixty-five.
Requested a monthly report.
Well, Doug, off-road is higher than on-road diesel?
Uh, no, sir. Off-road diesel, we pay, um, four, yeah, actually, that's, that, that's the type, but we pay four oh nine for off-road. And we paid, this was the last semi we just got. We paid four forty a gallon for, uh,
Okay.
home road.
Yeah, so that's just, that number's just flip, what you saying?
Flip, flip on and off, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think it's going.
How much did you buy? How much did you buy when you bought it the last time?
Uh, seventy-five hundred gallons. We bought three thousand regular, uh, twenty-five hundred and twenty-five hundred. And, uh, let me tell you right now what we got. We're averaging about a hundred and forty gallons of regular a, a day. So we've got sixty-nine hundred gallons of regular. That should last us a couple of months. We've got sixty-one hundred of off-road. We've got sixty-one hundred of off-road. That'll last. Andy, you buying a lot of off-road? Are you getting a lot of off-road?
No, we, we, we just have moved down there.
I mean, you getting a lot during every day or?
Yeah, I mean, the, the last couple of weeks, we've been running all the dump trucks. Pretty much have a piece of equipment we got.
You can all, off-road, you can all road in all.
All, all running off. We, we, dump trucks and all equipment off.
So we're averaging about thirty-three gallons a day on the off-road and about twenty-nine gallons of all road a day. So, I mean, we're, we, we've got a good bid. He, well, he was getting it from Sharber because we, we had the issue with the cars. And we finally got it worked out now. So he, he moved down to the fueling station.
Yeah, we, we just, just moved to, everything's running off here.
Alright.
Any, any problem with fueling station either, so.
That number will increase.
Oh, I'm sure.
I'm building up all three dump trucks, all three motor drivers everywhere.
Alright, is there any question on any of that stuff y'all got for Doug on the, what you seeing on the fuel report? Anything else we need to go?
Uh, the only thing is, is, is when Brad was here last week, and I, and I put, I said, I come in today too. Um, last month, you, you talked to him about paving the park.
Right.
And, um, if you look at, I, I put that same proposal that y'all had last month. Seventeen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four for the park and then five thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven for the parking lot. Right over by City Hall, which we own half of. But then if you look, Mike Floyd come in, two hundred and seventy-three thousand. And then a hundred and eighty-nine thousand for, for the parking lot. And, and I called him today to kinda find out what, what the, why was there such a big gap? What he said was, alright, so the, the one that, the tri-state park, all they're gonna do is just spray, just spray it.
Yeah, yeah, they're not.
It's just gonna basically make it look good. I mean, it's a sealer.
Yeah.
But it's not gonna fill in the cracks. Um, he is gonna, if you look at it, he's got seven tons of, of asphalt. He's gonna fix down in his bottom here. So he'll go and fix all that, but then other than that, he's just gonna basically spray it. Mike Floyd come in and said that he's gonna basically fix all the spots and then put another inch of, of asphalt across it. So, that's the difference.
He gonna do a real pretty job.
He's paving this guy.
This guy, yeah, this guy.
That's what the difference is in the price. So if you just want a bad day, that's a bad day. If you want a fix.
We got the, we got the school price that Mickey Rice fellow did.
Just wanna fix some bear spots.
Which is what, four hundred and forty feet.
Spray that ceiling, that's, that's.
When I saw that, I, I knew.
That's what you would do with, gonna do a parking lot.
This guy did the Free Will Baptist Church recently too. I mean, it looks good. Don't get me wrong. It's just, I don't know how long it's gonna last.
What, what's the track? It's five lanes times.
You take a word, dog.
Two foot of lane, five times two.
I don't know how decent that is. Yeah.
It's probably, I'd say fifteen foot probably, with a whip of that track. Times four hundred, four hundred and fifty feet, whatever it is. So, I just know, I know when I saw that, that number there, I was like, that ain't.
Even him doing, he, he was gonna do a, a bunch of. He said, uh, Doug was talking about, he said he'd do something with the grass and all, and I did.
Nah, yeah, I called that guy. So, so if, if, if the only twenty thousand dollar guy, we're responsible to get all that grass out of there. All, every bit of the asphalt, then from him coming there. But Mike Floyd said he does it all, grass removal. He was gonna even stripe it. I don't know about the twenty thousand dollar. I mean, it doesn't say on there if he's gonna stripe. But.
You wanna get another?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's.
A lot different.
E- even, I mean, there's a lot of area down there, but doggone, that ain't priced it right there.
Dog, dog, Oxford, since we already dealing with them.
Yeah.
I'd say get, you know, that guy Mickey Rice, I think is his name. We can get a price from him. I can get his number.
Who is that now?
Mickey Rice, I think is his name.
Now, now, see, when P V come up here to drop their bid off, I was asking them about it. They were like, yeah, 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 we'll put it in. I heard nothing from them. So. So, I mean, Oxford may be somebody.
You talk, talk to your man and just, you know.
We talking to get a good deal.
They may come in and pack. That, if y'all just wanted to go down there and pack some bear spots, we could get some cooking.
I don't think we wanna patch it. I think we wanna.
They talking, they talking about resurfacing the thing long-term and.
And maybe it's gonna come and tar it. That's gonna be like tar in the I G A parking lot. I mean, that.
Man, you do that on the weekend.
We just borrow Oxford tar to it, mighty out there and make a laugh or two.
You be writing down to do it?
No, no, not, no, no.
There's a difference in tar and in paving.
Yeah, that's, absolutely.
Difference was, one's just spraying and one's doing the whole.
You, you need to get another. If Oxford, if they interested, if they got a piece of equipment that they're. Gonna do that. You need to talk, you need to, while, while they up here, see, see if they'll, might do both of them at the same time.
Biggest thing is them moving them spots that's bare. Them moving a paving machine.
Is that a bunch of water that runs through there? Is that why that's like that right there?
No. When they come down there and, and did a bunch of the cleanup. They unloaded a bunch of equipment, twisted around, busted the asphalt all up. But they unloaded all that big equipment.
I got you.
But, I mean, we can, we can patch the, the bear spots with some hot asphalt.
Yeah, I think.
When we go get a load, we take box, flame scattered. I mean, that paving machine's what's killing it.
Yeah, I think we want to fix it though, where we gonna fool with it no more. Miss Christina won't fool with it no more.
See about that right there if you will there. While he's, they, while they gonna be in the area. Uh, what else we need to go? Alright, if ain't nothing else, we need a motion to adjourn. Second. We adjourn.
Well, he didn't say nothing about who was gonna buy something, but I guess.